Okay. It's the hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm gonna call the House of Order, uh, the Council of Order. But the rule is flat that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Counsel, we have before us this evening the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 5th, 2018. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? And I might ask that if you want to speak, you might have to raise your hands so I can see everybody. Since we're not at the Diaz, it's a little harder to see everyone. Okay. Seeing no hands there, the minutes of the regular meeting are approved. Counsel, ideas to be considered? Any council ideas to be considered? Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to take an opportunity to discuss the procedure that we as a city will have, that we currently have in place in the event that our city administrator should step down for another position. And if any of you other council members are aware of what our procedure is, I apologize for wasting your time, but I am not aware of that, and I would like to know what that procedure would be.
Okay, well, right now there's not a vacancy, but we can certainly take a look at it. I can give you some thoughts on that.
That would be great.
As we get there. I will put that under administration. Uh, consent agenda, counsel? What's your wish, cons- uh, consent agenda? Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion approved, seconded by councilmember Folt. That motion is before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We have under warning of contracts, public hearing, something that we do annually, and that is to have our annual stormwater pollution prevention plan report. John Craven from the Public Works Department is here to discuss that with us. John, welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Our open water demand requires cities of our size annually submit a permit to discharge stormwater into receiving water bodies. Stormwater permit typically covers a five-year period and is intended to reduce pollutants from reaching our rivers, lakes, and ponds. Hastings submitted our first stormwater permit report to the MPCA back in 2008. As part of the permit, the city was required to address six separate areas referred to as minimum control measures, and they include, first, public education and outreach. For this, we're providing stormwater-related postings on Facebook, River Town newsletters, and city website, and we participate in such events as Arbor Day, Spring Cleanup Day, and Blue Thumb Art Program. Second, public participation involvement. We create an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, for example, what we're doing here today at a public hearing. Third, illicit discharge detection and elimination. We maintain our storm sewer mapping system to better understand the system and are boots on the ground for identifying and calling into the MPCA, um, emergency non-stormwater-related discharge from the system. Fourth, construction site stormwater runoff control. So during plan reviews, we enforce stormwater ordinance regulations consistent with the MPCA and the Vermillion River watershed. And five, post-construction BMPs, once development is completed, we ensure the installed water quality infrastructure has a long-term maintenance agreement in place to make sure it works for the years to come. Of course, this is vetted up during the plan review process. And six, pollution prevention for city operations. So the question is, how do we at the city maintain our system? We street sweep, we inspect areas containing hazardous material, we conduct annual inspections to our sump manholes, flare-in sections, and ponds. And lastly, the MPCA is currently drafting a revised permit initially slated to come out in 2018. Additional requirements may be included for further, uh, to further reduce pollutants within our stormwater runoff, and staff will review these requirements once, once they come out and update the SWIP in, uh, in 2019 or as appropriate. Presently, we are being told no significant changes are gonna be made. Still with that, we'll get it back to you.
Thank you for that presentation, John. Appreciate that. I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. Does anyone here who'd like to speak to this particular issue? The annual stormwater pollution prevention plan report. Anyone like to speak to that particular issue? Okay. Seeing none, I think I'll close the public hearing. John, uh, counsel, is there any questions or comments? John, it's my understanding we're just having the report this evening. Do we need any adoption of any?
Just the report. Just the report on the public hearing. That's it.
The report need to be adopted, or you're just giving them the status?
Just the status.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Folt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had a question about the sweeping of Vermillion Street, and so it didn't appear to me that it was done this last spring or summer, and so I was wondering, um, is, is the sweeping of the highways included within that, or does this just pertain to the municipal high streets?
Yeah, what we're responsible is for the city streets itself. Highway 61 or Vermillion Street is a, a MenDOT road. We have them in the past in contact with them to see how often they can sweep that corridor, and they've let us know that with, uh, the resources that they have, they do that one time per year, and any additional sweepings would be at the cost of the city to sweep that corridor.
Okay.
Counselmember, please.
Yeah, I just think that's curious, because I noticed that there is a lot of sand along Vermillion Street, particularly on the south end of town, and maybe that's from the semi-traffic coming into the PD mill, but it's quite prevalent, and then it really collects around the intersection of Highway 61 and 46, 47, right there.
Sure.
And so like that whole median will be covered by the end of the summer, and so if we could just put that on our radar screen as to what is the thing that we can do to try to mitigate some of the sand collection that they have in that area, because as I said, it didn't appear to me, because I was watching for it in the spring, that it ever got swept to begin with, and so I haven't looked recently, it's been a little consumed with other things. Um, but, uh, but yeah, so you know, I just bring that up, I hit it dead horse to death, but, um, it would just be nice in that area to look well-kept.
Sure, and we can check in with, with MenDOT, see where they're at with their annual sweeping of that area, and find out when, what time of the year they do that. Sure, so very good comment.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Balsan?
Thank you, Your Honor. We now have with our street improvement projects some alleys that are now paved, curbed, and so forth. Are we going to be using street sweepers in those alleys for cleanup?
As needed. If, if there is sediment or leaves in there, we can certainly send a sweeper down there. So if there's something that we're missing, or, you know, whatever, just let the Public Works Department know, and we'll put it on the list.
Yeah, I took care of it.
Okay, excellent.
I got my lawn sweeper out. It's that alley between Eddie and Spring Street, between Seventh and Sixth. There's a lot of vegetation, trees, and so forth, and so I just kinda took it upon myself to get rid of it all, but it's something you may want to put on the radar.
Okay, I'll make the note. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, councilmember. Any questions on the side? Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate that update.
Thanks.
Okay. This is a very important project, and it's in relation to the quality of our water here in Hastings, and the water discharge, and that, and that water going to our rivers and lakes in the area, so it's a very important plan. Uh, next, we have councilmember Liefeld. You made a suggestion, uh, under administration, and perhaps you can restate, uh, concern or, or, or your statement earlier?
So I, what I would like to mention is, I think it's reasonable for us to expect as a council and a city that our fair city administrator will be at some point in the near future be leaving the city of Hastings. That is public knowledge, I'm not letting any cat out of the bag. Anyone with Facebook has, has seen this. So I'd like to find out what the procedure is that we as a city, staff and city council have in place in the event that, let's say tomorrow night, the wonderful city of Burnsville votes to take her away from us. So what is in place? And the reason I ask this now is, you know, we're looking at two more weeks, a couple holidays before our next meeting, um, you know, and I know the community is interested in, how does this happen? And with you leaving mayor, that does bring in a secondary concern of, you know, we're, we've gotta get ourselves in front of the eight ball, I think, so if you could maybe give me or shed some light on how this process is gonna work, um, over the next few weeks in the event that we do receive a resignation from our city administrator.
Sure. Well, I certainly have given this a lot of thought the last couple of weeks, um, as we, you know, heard some of the news, but first of all, why aren't we not talking about it tonight? Well, first of all, we haven't got a vacancy. Uh, there is no resignation at this time. And so I think until we have a resignation, um, you know, I, I didn't wanna jump ahead of the, put the, you know, the cart ahead of the horse, okay? So once we have a resignation before the body, we can, we will have the opportunity at that point to see how we wanna go. Now, if you want, my recommendation, a suggestion, I think if we would receive a resignation within the next, uh, week or so, then on the December 3rd meeting, I think that what we ought to do, and this is just a suggestion, uh, we can always have a meeting prior to this time, if you like, but I think what we would do is, uh, at the December 3rd meeting, I will bring forward a process that, uh, the council, that you can look at. One of the suggestions I would have is that a lot of our personnel issues are handled by the administrative committee of the council. I would suggest that the administration, uh, administrative committee of the council, which is councilmember Brock, Lund, and Folt, would, would gather, and what they would do are three main things. One, I think what they need to do is review the city administrator's position. Take a look at the job description and go over the job description. Two, the administrative committee at that time then, uh, would have a discussion to put out an RFP. An RFP to look, uh, I'm gonna stop for a minute, I hear a bunch of dinging, where's that coming from?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, sometimes this technology's got a line of its own, I get that. All right.
I'm reading the, uh...
I feel like I'm answering a question at Jeopardy or something. Hey, he's right! Hey, he's right!
My, my family is making up the, uh, the menu for, excuse me.
Yeah, well, we certainly wouldn't want to interfere with that.
So please ignore that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know how to get rid of that.
Okay. Under the administrative committee, then I said, one, they'll look at, uh, the job description of the, of the city administrator. Two, I think it would be the job of the administrative committee to then put together an RFP that would, uh, go out, so firms who work on, on this type of thing, usual at cities, hire firms to go out and conduct this process, once we give them the direction. These firms would be involved with recruitment, uh, they would guide the city after candidates are coming in, to go through the applications, and, and speak with the city council about, you know, future interviewing and things like that, okay? So we pick a firm, we start the RFP process. Third, the third thing is have the administrative committee also discuss, uh, do they want to have, and, and who to appoint, have some discussion in regards to a interim city administrator. Who would be, uh, the administrator once, uh, if a current city administrator would leave, and there would be a 45-day notice, okay? Melanie would be with us for 45 days, help us along with this process, okay? Um, and then that committee would discuss and come to a recommendation who the interim administrator should be. I anticipate then in December 17th, a lot of that work would be completed, we would then at December 17th issue the RFP, we would, uh, take under advisement the recommendations by the committee, um, as to the interim administrator that may be appointed down the road, um, and then, uh, they'll move us into January, okay? Then, Mary, very glad to have you here, then Mary Sue's office, and it'll be with this council with, uh, Mayor Lett Fassbender, uh, and then in January, working with that consultant, I would say that you have to probably put an RFP out for three or four weeks, so in January, first meeting in January, you might be able at that point to accept a, a proposal from the RFP, then you start working with that company, okay? Whoever that would be, and then the search would begin, and then let's say that takes, and I'm just throwing this out there, a month to six weeks, you get into early February, uh, then you start identifying who to, who to interview, and things like that, and then hopefully you might reach a resolution at end of February or sometime in March. So that's, that's kind of what I had envisioned, um, as once we have a vacancy, of how things could go. Counselmember?
Yep, thank you, Your Honor. That definitely helps. That's a procedure I wasn't aware of, so it helps. Um, I do have a clarification question then. When you went, mentioned that it would be discussed to put out the RFP, um, to find the firm, that sort of thing, I just wanna verify the, um, RFP, the firm that will be conducted or, um, used to conduct this process, as well as choosing of the interim, um, city administrator, both of those items are council-voted items, is that correct?
Yes. Uh, when the administrative committee, we, if we give that, give them that charge on December 3rd, uh, all the recommendations by the administrative committee will come to full council for full debate and discussion and a vote. Absolutely.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the explanation. That satisfies my curiosity.
All right, that's fine. Counselmember? Okay, is there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Folt?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. I wasn't sure if, um, the full council wanted to be a part of that discussion rather than just having it be the administrative committee. Um, it just seems like a really important issue, and that maybe it should be a workshop of the council of a, as a whole, so that everybody has an opportunity to review it and have a fuller discussion. Um, and, and I would also entertain meeting next week after the holidays. Melanie is a, is a wonderful catch, and I'm sure that the Burnsville City Council is going to approve her employment contract tomorrow night, it would, and, uh, so anyhow, so I think that the writing is on the wall, and I just would entertain having a full workshop, uh, committee meeting next week, if anyone else would be interested. Because I, I'm on the administrative committee, and so I'm glad to be a part of that, but I didn't want to speak for the other council members in case they actually did want to be a part of that discussion upfront, so...
Well, I have every confidence in the ability of the administrative committee to do their due diligence. I've noticed that we've been in some workshops, some have been productive, others have not. I think it's important that the, uh, that the administrative committee take the opportunity to roll up their sleeves and be able to dig into the work that I just described, and I have full confidence that, that, that is good. Now, as of all committees of the council, they're open to the public, and so if any council member wants to come, or if anybody from the public wants to be at that committee hearing, they're certainly invited to be there and participate. That would be my recommendation. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I still thi, I mean, we're not gonna rush into this decision, all due respect, we still have a city administrator. This shouldn't be discussed till December 3rd.
I agree.
If it happens at that time. If any one of us were in that situation, we would not be asking this question until something is projected here. We as a council go off of facts. We don't have a fact that we're projecting something here. This discussion needs to wait till December 3rd. If we get the resignation letter, then we'll move forward. And again, we're not gonna fill it, in my opinion, right away. We need to do our due diligence, and we'll have every opportunity as council members to get our two cents on this, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, councilmember. I share some of your concerns. Councilmember Liefeld?
I hear what you're saying, Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, um, but imagine if you were the CEO of, let's say, Microsoft, were to announce that he or she was seeking another job, and that they were waiting to vote on the negotiation of salary right now. It would make sense for the company to have a plan for replacing that CEO, would it not? If, under those circumstances, I'm sure the shareholders would demand it, and I think our constituents are saying the same thing. So I think we would be negligent in the fact to not at least have the conversation for something that we know is going to happen. Agreed, we can wait till December 3rd, but now we're talking two weeks, and this is just all about saying to the community, we know this is happening, we have a plan in place, Mayor, you just explain the plan. You have the, we have a plan in place, we know how we are going to go about placing an interim administrator, so I feel that my question has been answered to councilmember Folt. I appreciate your putting that offer out there. I will attend. I too have great faith in the administrative committee, but I appreciate your offering that, and I would attend just to listen as a community member at that meeting, of course, but I do want to just state that this is a big deal. Melanie is a big deal in this town, you guys. She does an awful lot for this city, and when she leaves, we're going to know she's not here.
Yeah.
So people can, some of us love her, some of us don't, she's phenomenal at what she does, and we are going to know she's not here. So I think it just is, we owe it to the council, you owe it to me, for me to know who's, how we're going to start this process, because there will be, there will be a void at City Hall when somebody of this stature leaves their community. She's the CEO of Hastings. So I'm fine waiting till the 3rd and following the process, but I am very reassured to know that this all goes before council. Those were the things I was concerned about. Thank you.
I appreciate councilmember Vaughn's perspective. I was not going to do this until we had a resignation, so just to let you know, counsel, I wouldn't have brought this up at all tonight, except councilmember Liefeld, you wanted to bring it up. My intention was that once we had a resignation in hand, uh, I was gonna make these suggestions at the December 3rd council meeting, the course of action to take. But since I was asked this evening, uh, that's how I envisioned how that process would go forward. Just so, just an outline, and it's all subject to full council approval. Councilmember Balsan?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I understand the magnitude of the, uh, position of city administrator, uh, and it's because of that that I would like to take, take things slowly, uh, you know, do some due diligence, have the council committee set up some, uh, parameters which they can bring back to the council, uh, and then we can move from there. But again, without a resignation, uh, I, I, I really am uncomfortable, uh, you know, trying to start things in motion. We've had other, uh, city employees who have submitted their resignation, and we've created , uh, temporary conditions where, uh, others, you know, cover for that individual until such time as we get, uh, a permanent replacement, uh, for that, for that staff member, and it was never, I, I never envisioned that if we have a city administrator resign on January 5th, that we're gonna have a new administrator in place on January 5th to, you know, grab the reins and, and keep on going. I think we have, uh, qualified staff, uh, here at the city who can, you know, keep some things going, keep everything going, actually, until such time as we can vet the appropriate candidates, because I think, uh, there's going to be quite a few applying for the position, and, uh, I, I think we're going to have to have a process in place that the committee can direct us toward, uh, that will move us in the direction of, uh, interviewing, hopefully just a small number of candidates. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not really in favor of, uh, any kind of, uh, special meeting that would, uh, you know, get us all together. I, I've used this phrase before, it is like trying to shape water, trying to, trying to herd cats, whatever you wanna call it, but we have a committee system in place, it has worked very well before, and let's let, let it do its thing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, councilmember Brock?
I don't wanna belabor the points, so I'll just quickly make my remarks, but I do wanna say that, uh, as the administrative chair of the committee, uh, I look forward to any input anybody wants to give into the process, whether it's a member of the public or somebody sitting at this desk. Um, so if you have ideas about qualities or processes that you wanna give to me, that you want to be a part of the process, please send them to me, call me, email me, um, but I also wanna make sure that we balance that with the respect that is due for Melanie and her job and all that she's accomplished at the city of Hastings. I have the utmost amount of respect for her and her work, and I want to respect her process and the process that she chooses to go to, which is her private business. Um, so with that said, I don't want, I, I also feel like a little behind this is a illusion that there's a lack of transparency, or there's something that's trying to be hidden, and I just wanna say, to echo my first statement, anybody who wants to have input or participate in the process, please do so, that's why we have a process, and that's why we follow it, and I'm happy to entertain your thoughts, um, as we go forward, and whatever happens, I'm happy to listen to what everybody has to say.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, our next order of business is comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience this evening? Any biting, anybody biting at the bit, come up here and speak to us at all?
Yeah.
Please. No? No? Okay. Okay.
Uh, I'm coming. I'm coming. From here. Yeah.
You have a statement, young man?
Hi, Zach, how are ya? Good.
Good. What can I help you with?
O'Neil. You do? Yeah.
Me too. Okay, I really do, I love it. Okay, can you give me a bone? Okay, so it's got... Okay, thanks, Zach. Thank you for coming up, Zach. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, council announcements? We have announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Vaughn?
I represent the, uh, Minnesota, the council on the Minnesota High Speed Rail on November 29th. The group, um, Minnesota High Speed Rail is quite a few years out before we get a connection between the Twin Cities and Chicago. The, the commission, which is made up of elected officials from St. Paul all the way to La Crosse, has had long discussions about changing the name and rebranding it, because our goal is really to get a second train on the Amtrak between here and Chicago, and right now there's only one, so if you write it down one day, you're not coming back till the next day. So just an FY that I'll be going there, representing us, doing a rebranding. The Minnesota High Speed Rail has scared off some people, saying it's not gonna happen. So it's just more of an FY that we're gonna start rebranding that commission.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you for that update, councilmember. Any other announcements? Okay, councilmember Balsan?
The Ops Committee.
Yes, I do. Okay, cool. Okay. Okay, uh, the, I have the following announcements. Uh, Tuesday, November 20th, many of you here were probably planning on going to the HBC meeting, but it's been canceled, so I give you that good news. It's been canceled, HBC on November 20th. On Wednesday, November 21st, at 7:30 a.m., the Operations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Balsanek with Liefeld and Lund, will be there to discuss the 2019 neighborhood infrastructure improvements. That meeting will go, is going to be at the Public Works Building at 1225 Progress Drive. Again, that's at 7:30 in the morning for the early risers, okay? Uh, Thursday, Friday of this week, just to let everyone know again, its city offices will be closed, observance of, uh, Thanksgiving, and, uh, we, on behalf of the city of Hastings, all of its employees, our council members, and, uh, we wanna wish everybody back at home and here tonight, very happy Thanksgiving, and please be safe over the holiday. On Monday, November 26th, at 7:00 p.m., the Planning Commission will be meeting, probably in this room. Uh, the reason why we're meeting in this room, I probably should've stated that earlier, is that the regular council chambers is, uh, going, uh, is under a little bit of a redo, and it's going to have a, a, a new system there for the public to be able to see what's going on in the council in terms of graphics, and also fresh paint and, and carpet. So, um, that's happening, and hopefully we'll, on December 3rd, we'll be back, if, if we can, right, Mike? They're working on it, so... Uh, community events, uh, councilmembers, this is an important one. Tuesday after Thanksgiving on November 27th, the, at Dakota County, or excuse me, Dakota Pines Banquet Center, at 2015 Rescue Drive, um, will be more, another session, uh, in relation to our, uh, equity and inclusion project, we're welcoming Hastings. Uh, there will be a $10 buffet dinner from 5:00 to 6:00 for $10, prior to the meeting, and, but we, and, and, so at 5:00 to 6:00, and I believe the meeting itself starts at 7:00. So, uh, that'll be at, you know, Tuesday, November 27th, starting at 5:00, for any of those interested, of, uh, some food for a $10 buffet option, and then childcare will be provided by the Hastings Area YMCA there at that, uh, site, and then the, the, the full history and detail of the Hastings Diversity and Equity Inclusion Initiative and Equity Innovation Labs is available on the city website. So hopefully we'll see many of you there that evening. The next city council meeting will be on Monday, December 3rd, council. So Highway 316 at 5:30 that evening, and that city council meeting on, on December 3, that city council meeting following that on December 3 at 7:00 p.m. Council, I have no further business before us, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Brock makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Liefeld. That's a non-debatable motion, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.